I'd like to call the October 12, 2023 Planning Board Meeting for the Town of Surf City to order. Do I have an approval for the agenda?
Motion.
Have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved. Next, I need approval for the August 10, 2023 minutes. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'm checking what's on. A motion.
Have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Minutes are approved. Do we have anyone for public comments?
We do not have anyone for public comment tonight.
Amy, would you like to start with our text amendments?
Yes, ma'am. The first text amendment before you tonight should go pretty quickly. Appendix A, Section 8 of the Special Use Permit stated that all special use permits had to come to Planning Board for review prior to going to council. With this being a quasi judicial hearing, council is not allowed to take into account anything that is said outside of that hearing. Therefore, they cannot take into account what Planning Board is saying. So I am requesting that we remove all Planning Board responsibilities from the special use permit language, since it cannot be taken into account as a part of the quasi judicial hearing.
That was part of our training last week, correct?
Correct. It was going to be taken out as a part of the overall ordinance update that we're working on. But since we have had quite a few special use permits recently, and we had not for a pretty good period of time, we decided as a group to go ahead and move that forward and get it removed now, so that you're not spending time on something that cannot be listened to anyway.
I make a motion, we approve it.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Amendment is approved.
Our second text amendment before you tonight is an amendment to Appendix A, Section 4.1.17, which is the Coastal Forest Overlay District. Appendix A of the town ordinances creates the zoning requirements for the town. The town is currently working on updating the zoning and subdivision ordinances so that they reflect the recently adopted Comprehensive Land Use Plan, as well as any additional legislative changes that have been made. Ordinances that require more immediate attention are being brought forward on an individual basis. Although they are being brought forward at this time, additional changes may be made during the update process. The Coastal Forest Overlay District was created to help preserve and protect the remaining maritime forests and natural vegetation in the town's most vulnerable areas. This zoning district encompasses all properties on Topsail Island, as well as properties adjacent to coastal waters and wetlands. So areas such as Atkinson and Little Kinston on the mainland are prime examples of those areas. In recent years, the amount of fill being placed in these areas has significantly increased. Staff was directed by the town council at the August work session to consider language limiting the placement of fill. Staff is recommending that the Coastal Forest Overlay District language be modified to support the limit of fill placement, the storm water flowing offsite, and to increase erosion control measures. The attached ordinance revisions are four-year review. The Comprehensive Plans has the following recommendations regarding storm water and fill. So consider amending the town ordinances to provide additional regulatory standards within the floodplain, erosion-prone areas, and other areas susceptible to hurricane and other storm event flooding. Consider amendments to the town zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations to further address storm water runoff from development. Consider opportunities for strengthening and enforcing local regulations that protect native flora and fauna, such as mitigating the impacts of human development on sea turtles. And then consider opportunities to update the town's development regulations to address storm water control issues and erosion and sediment control. And the final one being explore options to regulate the placement of fill on lots on the island. Any such regulation should include requirements of the specific fill material that may be used. So as part of the research, we reached out to our consultant and asked them to provide some information. We also reached out to the COG. Y'all are all know Wes with the COG. We reached out and talked to him about it. He has worked on a few of them. Ocean Isle has tackled this. Wrightsfield Beach has some language in theirs. Topsail Beach has, I believe, North Topsail has a little bit. So it's something that's becoming a more common regulation on the barrier islands. If you have any specific questions about any of the language in here, I'd be happy to answer it.
Can you tell us now what's required as far as storm water runoff is concerned over on the island? I think I know, but I want to make sure I know.
So currently in our storm water ordinance, which is in Appendix A, Section 5, I don't remember the next part, but it's in Section 5 of Appendix A, we require that any lot that is smaller than 10,000 square feet treat the first inch and a half within 24 hours, unless it is a part of a high-density state storm water permit. So like, and that's anywhere in town, not just the island. So like Magnolia Reserve and Waterside, any lot in there that was less than 10,000 would not have to have their own because they have a high-density state storm water permit. And then on the island, if you have a low-density, like for instance Saltwater Landing has a low-density permit, but most of their lots in there are larger than 10,000 square feet, so they don't have to have one. The thought process in that is that the water is treated as it runs off your house, as it runs through the grass and infiltrates on a lot that large.
Are the ones on the island required to have French drains?
Only if the lot is less than 10,000 square feet.
Most of those are.
A significant amount of them are, but there are some that are not.
The ones that are less than 10,000 have to have a French drain?
They have to have an engineered storm water system. A French drain is the most common. We would like to maybe see some rain gardens start being used and some other measures, but French drain is the most common, yes, ma'am.
What else do they recommend?
Storm water gardens are probably the biggest. A dry infiltration basin is another thing that you could use, where the water just kind of, it's always dry, but it's a low depression in the yard, and then the water just infiltrates in. On the canals, our soils aren't as good. But if you start looking over, you know, on North Shore, South Shore, going up more onto the dune, our soils are much better. And if the fill brought in is not a restrictive layer of fill, then the infiltration rates are much better once you get away from that. Also, once you move away from the sound, you're getting more distance between the groundwater table and the top of your ground, which allows for that infiltration and storage. And this will continue to be visited as a part of the rewrite. This is our first kind of a stopgap for in-between now and as we do more.
Amy, is there any real change in this other than just farbage?
Yes, ma'am. Right now, we do not have a fill limit. So in our flood prevention ordinance, which is in Chapter 5, the upfront part of the ordinances, we are, all of the stuff that we talk about in Planning Board comes from Appendix A, B, and C. So upfront in Chapter 5, we have our flood prevention ordinance. And it requires certain things in the VE zones, in the V zones. It does not require, it doesn't limit the fill in the AE or the, you know, the other areas. So this would limit the amount of fill to two feet with potentially three feet with engineering design. It would also require all the builders to actually show what they're doing in advance, instead of just here's your flat site plan. You would be required to show how much fill and how you're grading it on your site.
For all zones?
Ma'am?
For all zones?
For everything on the island and on anything that touches coastal marsh or waters.
The two feet of fill is measured from?
The center of roadway. So if you're, you know, if you have a hole, let's say, on your lot, you can fill that lot, and that doesn't count against you. It's measured from the center of the roadway.
So the two foot is basically there to help prevent a lot of the road floodage that we're having now, correct? Because right now, you have a lot of overflow from the lots going straight into the, into the streets and the other properties that have been built way prior to now, correct?
So there's a lot going on with the storm water issues. You know, everybody that built initially bought the good lots, right? The higher lots and whatnot. And now what's being sold and what's being built is our lower lots. So the natural drainage tends to go to those lots. So the fill gets them out of that, so that they can actually build and use that lot. But it also keeps water that previously drained onto it from being able to drain onto it. So that's why we're looking at limiting it and also not allowing it to go right up to the property line so that there is still some storage area in there.
I know North New River and Mecklenburg, there's a big issue with several houses right there from a lot of the new builds where existing houses about 30 years old and older are really taking in a lot of the overflow of water from the new properties. Is this there to prevent that? Is this new ordinance going to help at least mitigate that damage some?
So those new houses aren't shedding that much water. They're stopping the water that was originally going onto them. So my house was here, and this lot was down here. All of my water was draining onto this lot here. And now it's no longer allowed to drain there. So in theory, if you wanted to truly fix it, all the older homes would need to treat their own storm water as well. We would need to go back and have retrofit projects for all of them because their storm water is going off, and the place that their storm water was previously sitting is no longer available to them. The other thing that has happened on the north end is that, as, you know, those were dirt roads when a lot of those lots were built. Every time that we bought in additional rock, and eventually it was paved, raised those grades. So the water is now trapped within those blocks because there's not necessarily outlets as time has gone by.
So the older homes may be susceptible to this new ordinance as far as?
This will, from a perception standpoint, this will be better because it is limiting the amount, and it's also allowing some storage to remain on those properties.
I'm assuming by limiting the amount, that would protect the neighbor that's already there?
Potentially, yes.
Is that looked at when the plan is submitted?
So the person, if you're on less than a 5,000 square foot lot, you're already putting your water an inch and a half in 24 hours into the ground. Your neighbor beside you is not. So that's where part of, part of the issue with this is coming in, is that I, as the new homeowner, am treating my water and putting it in the ground. My water is not running off on you until we get over an inch and a half of rain. It's not running anywhere. It's going into the ground. Your inch and a half is going, is not going into the ground because you do not have any kind of engineered treatment. So it's partially your water that was previously being accepted by my vacant lot is the issue. It's not that until we get over an inch and a half of rain, I am dumping no water off of non-pervious surface onto anybody except into the ground, as long as I haven't done something to mess up my engineered system.
Makes sense. Are the older homes going to be required to put in a system? Or just if they want to stop the flooding that's now occurring in their yard?
So we are hoping to do some education in the future, looking at bio-retention swells and rain gardens and things like that, and making suggestions of things that can help. But I don't know that we would go out and do a wholesale, everybody's got to treat their storm water now, plan. And we're also doing some drainage studies and whatnot to try to help treat some of the water that's already standing in different areas. We've got the large project on South Shore that we're working on with DOT that has been funded. And then we're doing a study in some other areas to look at potential ways to treat that water that is, that is standing. Because we can't dump it straight into the sound or the ocean.
So what will deem, what you're built will deem an older home? How would that be determined?
An older home is any home that has been permitted prior to the start of this ordinance. I cannot, I cannot retroactive an ordinance onto, onto a house that's under construction. So any permit, if this is approved at the November council meeting, any permit issued after that will have to meet the requirements of this ordinance.
So if you decide, if we decide to put it in place for older homes, it will pertain to everybody?
We, if we decided that we needed to do some kind of wholesale storm water ordinance on the island, that everybody had to start treating a certain amount of water, it would, it would be everybody. But this ordinance is only an ordinance moving forward.
Would it not be a good idea to wait to get the opinion from Wes?
Wes had input in the writing of this.
Okay, he already had his input.
I reached out to him, working on it. He gave me some of the language.
And what are the other, like Riceville and Ocean Isle, and what are some of the other ones doing?
Riceville, or Ocean Isle and Topsail Beach are very similar because Wes wrote them.
Oh, okay.
And Topsail Beach started with a one-foot fill limit and then raised it to a two-foot fill limit. And we started with the two-foot fill limit.
Is the fill limit noted on the site plans when the builder comes in for his permitting?
Previously, it was not. It will have to be moving forward.
They could just put whatever they wanted?
No, they have to provide elevation certificates for everything anyway. Well, I say that. For 95% of the lots on the island, there's going to be an elevation certificate associated with it because it's in a flood zone. We've got a very small amount of X on the island. So they're going to have natural ground on that elevation certificate that is going to be stamped by a licensed surveyor.
But over and above that, right now, they can put what they want?
Right now, yes, ma'am. They, I do not get elevations on my current surveys for preliminary plot approval.
Charles?
I mean, I don't get fill on there.
Where is the building height measured from in Surf City? Do you happen to remember?
It's adjacent to the, it's the ground adjacent to the structure. I think in Topsail Beach, it's from the roadway.
Average? Lot there? Okay.
So that would not change your height of your structure because you would still be able to measure the fill adjacent and go up from there.
The lots that are over there now that have been filled in but have not been built on, there's nothing we can do about that?
Correct. Unless they have some kind of CAMA violation or 401 violation. But we don't have any fill that was placed prior to an ordinance. We can't make them remove it.
They weren't required to permit it, so to speak?
Correct. They weren't doing anything wrong at the time.
So by that theory, we also couldn't go retroactively and implement a standard for older homes too, correct? If we go across the board for systems? I mean, that would be the same, same concept, correct?
We can put, so we can put in a zoning ordinance that you have a certain amount of time to come into compliance with. So that's, we would say, you know, you have five years, how many every years to come into compliance with this ordinance?
We can do that, we can do that with the newer homes going, going like four feet or five feet later on? Or no?
No, because if you took off the fill, you would have to take off, like, the structural integrity would be gone for the house.
Seems like it would benefit the homeowner to put their, the older homes to put their system in. Aren't they just getting the flooding that they would have always gotten had there not been an empty lot next to them?
It would be very beneficial for existing homes to put in a measure. I would recommend a bio-retention swell or a rain garden. Everybody likes to landscape their yard anyway, and we're out there paying money to water it. Why not create an area that, you know, that can receive that rainwater and then have plants in it that grow?
Makes sense.
NC State has a lot of literature on that, if anyone would like to look into it.
I think we, I think we had people come talk on that years ago before you were here.
I think we-
Rain gardens and-
And utilizing native vegetation and those kinds of things. We have some natural yard books upfront that anybody can come in and get. So we do have some information on it. And some of that will, education will hopefully be a part of our storm water that we're looking at as well. It's providing some educational materials on our website.
Is that what's going on at the dunes in the south end of Surf City? You know, down by us, the 1800, 1900 block where they're throwing water into the?
Oh, I got you. We are doing underground infiltration basins for the roadway flooding through there. So they will be, they're basically big bottomless pipes. The water comes in, it stores, and it slowly infiltrates into the ground instead of standing on the above.
It's worked too, you can tell.
Yeah, as long as they remain cleaned out, they work really well.
I make a motion, we approve it.
I'll second.
In favor? Any opposed? Amendment is approved.
Our next item on the agenda tonight is a site plan and subdivision approval. So this is an overall master plan, so we are doing it as one approval package instead of looking at the subdivision separate than the site plan portion. We have it all combined together. But the part on the ocean is following, is falling under Appendix B or subdivision ordinances, while the other parts, the duplex areas, are falling under Appendix A, Section 5.13, our site plan approval sections. So in your packet tonight, we have the Dune Ridge Site Plan and Subdivision Approval. The overall tract is about 51.15 plus or minus acres. The total development area, though, is 6.6 plus or minus acres. So a lot of that is the wetlands out there going into the, into the sound back there. The project name is Dune Ridge, and it will be a residential community. It is already zoned mixed-use, so it is appropriately zoned. This property is currently known as the Heinz Trailer Park. I did find some other names for it in the past, but I've never heard it called anything but the Heinz Trailer Park. So I stuck with that. It's located in the 700 block of North New River between Shell Road and North Topsail Drive, and in the 800 block of North Topsail Drive. As I said, the property is currently known as the Heinz Trailer Park. It has been in existence since prior to the records that I have in 1977. So I'm not 100% sure when it started, but it was before 1977. Based on historical areas, units located on Tract 2 of the park were removed between 2003 and 2008, with Tracts 1, 3, and 4 remaining occupied. The below map provides both the location and zoning. Please note that everything is either mixed-use or R5 around it, so it is in a predominantly residential area. Charles Riggs, or Charles Riggs of Charles Riggs and Associates is here tonight, and he is requesting the site plan and subdivision approval for the redevelopment of the Heinz Trailer Park into a single-family and townhome subdivision. The new development will consist of 11 single-family homes located on the oceanfront and along the new Dune Ridge Court, subject, road name subject to approval by Pender County. Tract 2 through 4 will consist of 19 duplex units. The development will consist of 49 dwelling units. The proposed development will receive a driveway permit from NC DOT for Tract 4, which accesses North New River Road. Tracts 1 through 3 access Town of Surf City streets. Tracts 2 and 3 will have access along Shell Road only. Individual unit access will not be allowed for the townhomes. A common driveway will be utilized for each of the three townhome tracts. All single-family lots will access the proposed Dune Ridge Court and will not have access to North Topsail Drive. The original park held approximately 50 units. However, the park has been home to less than 30 units over the past few years. The expected increase in traffic would not require any roadway improvements. Town ordinances require residential development of more than three lots and/or units to provide sidewalks. The proposed development is also located within the project limits of the East Coast Greenway feasibility study, which we wrapped up this past spring. The applicant proposes a multi-use path along Shell Road, which is the desired location of the East Coast Greenway path in this area. The greenway would then, would follow North New River Drive from the northern town line. It'll turn onto Shell Road and then onto North Shore Drive. Tract 4 will provide a sidewalk along the western side of North New River Drive, while Tract 3 will provide a sidewalk on the eastern side of North New River Drive. Tract 3 will also provide a sidewalk on the western side of Shell Road. Tract 2 will provide the multi-use path along Shell Road, as well as the sidewalk along North Topsail Drive. And finally, Tract 4 will provide- And finally, Tract 4 will provide a sidewalk along Dune Ridge Court's north side and Sunrise Court's east side. So, uh, Dune Ridge Court and Sunrise Court are not required to have sidewalk on both sides because they are, um, smaller streets. The site proposes a five-foot public and private beach and sound access along the northern boundary. The development will be serviced by town sewer and water. The in, existing infrastructure will be removed. New sewer and water lines will be placed in accordance with current standards, and additional hi, fire hydrants will be placed to meet current standards. The applicant is working with the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality for a redevelopment permit. Based on historical areas, the agency will not require a high-density stormwater permit. However, the town will require the roof structure of residential lots of less than 10,000 square feet and the townhomes to be treated. Um, so the oceanfront homes are actually larger than 10,000 square feet, so they will not be required to meet the stormwater. From an environmental standpoint, KMA and NCDEQ permits will be issued for this permit prior to the start of construction. The site will be required to meet the parking standards of the ordinance for each housing density. The site plan notes the setback requirements outlined, um, in the ordinance and will provide buffers along each side. That got big. The development will consist of roads that are built to two, two-town standards. The development will provide roadway width and turn radii to accommodate the town's fire apparatus. The Comprehensive Land Use Plan defines this area as island traditional. Um, I have included the text in here straight from the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, but of note, the example desired uses are single-family residential uses, um, two-family residential uses, and small-scale compatible multifamily residential uses. So this is a use, um, that is desired in the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Staff recommends approval of the subdivision and site plans as submitted with the following requirements per town ordinance. Uh, these are really just to clarify a little bit of language or whatnot on, um, on the plans. So provide easement language to the town, allowing utility, pedestrian, and fire apparatus access as needed to ensure these areas remain open. Once the language is agreed upon, provide the town with a recorded map and easement language. Uh, what we have seen over time is that, you know, it doesn't get recorded, so it's not really ours. Or it's recorded as a utility easement, and then we want to go back and put a sidewalk there, and we can't because it was recorded as a utility easements. And easements can have very specific, the language can be very specific, and you can only do the thing that it says you can do. You can't, it's not just a town easement where we can do whatever we want. So we want to make sure that the language is in there, um, for the utility, the pedestrian, and the fire apparatus access, so that we don't come out and there's now a bunch of bushes or, you know, cars parked or, or whatnot, so that we can maintain those accesses and keep them clear. We also would like to add to provide easement language to the town for the beach and sound side access easements. Once the language is agreed upon, provide the town with a recorded map and easement language. Uh, note in the restrictive covenants that no additional access is allowed to town or NC DOT streets outside of the access as approved with the site plan. Our ordinance does mention limiting through lots, which is what, um, part of these are, which basically has a, um, has a road on each side with access on each side. Um, since we can't really limit that there, we want to limit that access. And then, of course, the Coast Forest Overlay District only allows for a 25-foot wide, 24-foot wide driveway access, and most of that's going to be taken up in the front yard anyway, but we do want to just add that language, so there's no question. Um, and then the developer is to modify the existing island located within Shell Road to meet current ADA standards. The developer will work with NC DOT and the town of Surf City to ensure compliance. So right now, we show, um, ADA ramps on each side of it. There's an island, obviously, you can't, it, the island doesn't meet ADA. Um, so we just wanted to give them a little bit more time to work with the, with the DOT to make sure that it's on our road, but it is within the radius of NC 50. So we want to make sure that whatever we are putting in meets everybody's requirements. And then a receiving ramp will be added on North Topsail Drive across from the ramp located on Sunrise Court. So, um, those are the five additions that I recommend if, if you decide to recommend approval tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
The town has the, I'm sorry, the town has the capacity for the sewer and water?
Uh, yes. So basically, the, the trailer park had capacity, and we're just trading capacities.
On the sound side, the, the, the roadway to get to the, I guess it's the, the townhomes on the backside, is there more than one entrance to get there? Is it a through-way entrance, or is it just one way in, one way out?
Uh, the final design of the town home driveways will be determined by, on the sound side, will be determined by NC DOT. Um, so it will either be two, two-way, or it may end up being two one-ways, but, um, that is an NC DOT roadway. And our ordinances state that on an NC DOT roadway, we just meet their requirements. We don't. Um, so they will have that, they will have the two accesses off of North New River.
So there will be multiple access points. My, my concern is the, when we had the fires that burned those five houses down, um, in Surf City a few years back, the fire departments couldn't access the backside to, to mitigate the damages and, and carry through. So there is two access points for-
So there, currently, there are shown two access points on North New River. The DOT may or, may or may not approve that. They're, they will be working through the NC DOT permit process. As of right now, these houses are shown to be open underneath. The access that's there existing will, will remain, um, that goes out and goes around by herrings.
Okay. It's going to be all one builder that you, it's going to be building all the homes?
When you say we're trading off the, the water and sewer for, for the trailer parks, um, we have comparable amount of volume, uh, because I, I understand you said the houses are significantly larger, and then obviously duplexes are going to be probably take more demand than, uh, trailer parks.
Yep, the way that we, um, the way that we do our sewer and water and price can speak to this more, um, we have plenty of water, so we're good there. On the sewer capacity, though, we don't look at the number of bedrooms. We look at the size of the service going to it, and it would be a similar-sized service.
Uh, yeah, so we did, we looked at historical, um, records and inventory from, um, when the sewer system was built, '88 to '92. And, uh, they had much more trailers there then than we're authorizing now. We authorized up to 50 now. And the way we do our calculations, it is per bedroom, uh, we do our system development fees by size, but the calculation is per bedroom. Um, and even with a duplex, each side of that is counted as an individual unit. So it's not like they're getting six bedrooms, uh, for a three-bedroom. It's a three-bedroom, and three-bedroom count as two units.
Right. So, but as far as '92, when, when we had 50 trailers there, I mean, we're kind of significantly in a different position as a town in regards to demand on our sewer system. That's not going to be affected at all. I mean, there is going to be a little bit more increase, correct? Versus what it is now? We're not looking at '92 because '92, we didn't have as much development. So we kind of got to compare today. Apples, apples.
So there's an existing permit, and that flow was accounted for in that permit.
Okay. So we have to, we have to carry that permit to today's standard? So legally, it's, it's-
Not exceeded that permit with development.
Okay. I got you.
Do we have any other discussion? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
I don't know if y'all will help me.
The last, or the next item is the, um, ordinance update on the agenda. So you have in your packet a little kind of one-pager about what the expectations are and where we're at, but I did want to show you what I'm currently working on. Kyle's working on it, is, is looking at it as well, but, um, they have provided us a, let me see if I can get it turned on. They've provided us an annotated, uh, document. So basically, they, you know, downloaded everything. Our ordinances can be downloaded into a Word document. So they downloaded our ordinance into a Word document, um, and they are going in, and you can see on your screen right now, Karen is our project lead. Lisa works with her, and then Greg is going to be in here. They're asking questions, they're making statements, um, and then I'm going back in, and looking back through them. So I'm on like page 60 of 93 of the first document, and I've not started, um, the second document, but you can see where Kyle and I are going back, um, and making, making comments. So once this process gets through, they'll start working on some of that language, and we'll start, um, sharing more, more with y'all, um, and asking for, you know, kind of more input. And then if there are things that we have, um, specific questions on, then, you know, we'll go ahead and reach out and send out, hey, we feel like we should be doing this. How, how do y'all feel about that? Also, uh, one of the things that they've looked at that I really like, so when we decided to do this update, we talked about, do we do a UDO, which is a Unified Development Ordinance, where it kind of puts everything together? Or do we stick with the ordinance the way that we have it? Kyle and I talked a lot about that. Sticking with the ordinance the way that we had it seemed to make sense because everybody already knew how to use that. So that is what we are doing. That being said, um, the sections and chapters are being moved around and put in, in kind of the correct places. Um, there's some, when you read through this, it doesn't always flow well. You're like, okay, this makes sense, this makes sense. Why are we talking about this now? So we're gonna, they are going through and looking at all of those and all those places where we go, okay, why is this here? It's going into where it, where it needs to be. So we have 14, I think it is, chapters in Appendix A right now or sections. They will be reducing that because some of the authorities and things like that that need to be up front in, in the overall authority will be moved up into those areas. And then, um, we'll also be working on hyperlinking, so it's, it, it may reference another section within the code. So some of, um, Appendix B will now be referenced back to Appendix A and vice versa. On the online version, there'll be hyperlinks wherever it says C-section, you know, Appendix A, Section 4.2, you can just click on it and it will jump you down there, you know, and back and forth. We'll also be looking at adding, um, some flow charts on how processes work so that, you know, that's a little bit more clear. And there will also be, um, some updated graphics put in here. Like if you look at our, um, lighting ordinance, it looks like we copied a page like 14 times and then stuck it in there. Um, so there will be updated graphics, updated flow charts. Um, all of the, the spreadsheets will be updated with like the, um, the setbacks and all of that. So I will be, hopefully next week, getting through the rest of the, all of these comments. Um, as you can see, they've, they've made quite a few, um, and responding to them, and then, and then we'll start digging into it, um, as a group. I have talked with Karen about it. We will probably do a special work session, um, each time we want to do that, instead of just a planning board where we're more in a room around tables talking versus all of y'all sitting up there staring at me at this table. Um, and those will be advertised to the public, so the public will be able to come and listen. They will not be speaking at those particular meetings. They can come to the planning board meeting and speak, but they can come and listen if they so desire. We will also be doing away with Appendix C and moving it into Appendix A, where it should have been housed initially. Any questions on the ordinance update?
Lot of work.
When do you think the work sessions will start? Any idea?
Um, I have a check in with Karen. I think it's next Thursday, so I'm going to try to get as much information as I can to her the beginning of the week, and then we'll start kind of trying to get that, um, laid out a little bit better, but it's October, right? Before Christmas. And they had a proposed schedule of, I think, around 11 months, and they are pretty much following the schedule that they originally set out when we, um, brought them, brought them on board, so. And once I get my comments, if y'all would like for me to share this document with you just so you can read through it at your leisure, the comments back and forth, uh, what I will do is put it in a OneDrive file like I did the, um, agenda packet, and y'all can go in and look at it. Any more question, any questions on that? All right, so in, um, when we were setting up the agenda, or the calendar this year, in November, the Friday after the planning board meeting is a holiday, so I had backed it up to Wednesday. Well, that Tuesday is Election Day, so council meeting got moved to Wednesday. So we can't have a planning board and council meeting at the same time on, in November. Um, so is everyone okay with moving it to Thursday, November 16th at 4:00 PM?
We don't take precedence?
No. I do not. You might, but I do not. Is every, um, is everyone good with Thursday, November 16th? Everybody get out your phones. Let me know. Okay, if anybody finds out when they get home and, and look at their work calendar or whatnot, that it doesn't work, let me know, and if we need to reschedule, we will. But as of right now, I plan to have the meeting on November 16th at 4:00 PM here.
Amy, do you have any updates for us?
Um, we, I, I had quite a few things submitted, um, this past week that I have not had a lot of time to delve into yet, so hopefully next week I will get to delve into those things. But the, um, the Evolve Sid Berry property, which was that large chunk of land out on 17 that came in about a year ago for rezoning for apartments, um, they will be coming back forward. They have submitted a rezoning request, so expect to see that, um, coming in the near future. Um, we have the special use permit, um, for the increase in boat rentals at the Marina. Um, that will be held. We will approve the ordinance change hopefully at the November council session, and then that will be heard at that session instead of coming to y'all. Um, so that one is coming forward. The special use permits that y'all did here, um, the one on JH Bats will be going to council in November, and then the one out here on, um, 5210 will be going in December. And that is all that I have right now. Uh, there is a piece, Magnolia Reserve is looking at annexing, annexing additional property and adding around 20 additional lots to that subdivision on the back side of it.
Act rate?
It's kind of adjacent to Saltwater, but there's a, here, hold on. There's already a, like a county subdivision-ish out there, and they would be buying, um, buying that.
that. So if you look at your screens, here is, right here is East Bardell, West Yellow, Lower Drive, East Yellow, Lower Drive. And then back here, you see North Alina Court and South Alina Court. It's going to be part of this area back here that's already a subdivision in the county, but they're looking at coming in. And then those, that subdivision would then have access through Magnolia Reserve, which will be really nice for that subdivision, because they currently have to go out this RA King to Willwood, back over to Watts Landing and out that way. And I believe a big portion of this is a dirt road. So it will provide a paved access through Magnolia Reserve for the subdivision in the back if it comes into town. And those lots will be relayed out to, to meet the ordinance requirements. And if it has an existing house on it, it will not be a part of it, it will not be brought into the town.
Any other discussions? So before we adjourn in a little late, I would like to welcome you to the planning board, Daniel. Failed to do that in the beginning, but we're glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Meeting is adjourned.